Call this meeting to order, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Harriman City Council Meeting on November the 4th, 2014. We'll start our meeting with a prayer and follow that with a pledge to the standing and pledge to the flag. Councilman Wright's not here, obviously. Could you lead us in prayer?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Young?
Father, we just thank you for this beautiful fall day you've given us. Thank you for all your blessings. I pray you'll guide the thoughts and minds of the mayor and council tonight as they discuss this important business of the city. May everything society here tonight be better, our community, and may we all work together, Father, so that we might build up our community and have it as a wonderful place, especially for our children who are coming on after us. We pray also tonight for servicemen and women, Father, throughout the world, just ask you to watch over them and their families, keep them safe. Pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris Ayler?
Here.
Wayne Best?
Here.
Buddy Holly?
Here.
Kenyan Me?
Here.
Ken Martin?
Here.
Lonny?
Before we get started, I'd like to welcome a new employee that we have, a new city manager, Kevin Helms is sitting up front with us. He started, his first day was yesterday. It was about a three year or four month process going and actually finding and narrowing it down and hiring Kevin. The actual process started back in, I think, 2003 to transition to get to where we are today. So, anyway, we welcome him. He'll be here, of course, after the meeting if y'all would like to come up. He'll be available daily if you have any questions or concerns or whatever. We've got full-time management now. So, having said that, we'll move on to the agenda. Included in everybody's packet is a copy of the minutes from the October 14th meeting. Is there a motion to approve those? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Ayler and a second by Councilman Best.
Councilman Ayler?
Yes, sir.
The floor is open for question or discussion or amendments, deletions, corrections. Call roll.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyan Me?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Also included in everyone's packet is a copy of the minutes from the special call meeting on October 20th. First, is there a motion to approve those?
Yes.
Motion by Councilman Me.
Second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Me.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly. Floor is open for question or discussion or corrections on those. Call roll.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyan Me?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes. Is there a motion to pay salaries?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Me.
Second.
Second by Councilman Me. Councilman Me.
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for question, discussion, call roll.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyan Me?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
This time with your delegations, if anyone in the audience would like to address council, you may do so at this time. If you would stand and state your name proudly, your comments for three minutes to accommodate others that might like to speak. Councilman Burks? Councilman Sampson?
Father, Jody Sampson, when I left the council, I was hoping that y'all would continue your own plan to do anything next midtown. And, you know, three months gone by, we haven't started any process or anything. Senator Yager said we could apply for a hardship, then let me go ahead and do it. As I said before I left, we, longer you wait, they gonna come back and tell you that you waited too long. We need to go ahead and jump on that and get the process done. We don't need to lose midtown. And then go ahead and try to get Highway 70 on down to Point 98.
Yes, sir.
I'm John Maliski with the Stable American Veterans Post here in Rome County. Last meeting, I, you know, made mention that we are hunting monies for a van, and there was a lot of suggestions given to us about checking with drug seized vehicles, et cetera. And I've explored a lot of those. In fact, I've even downloaded the Tennessee Drug Fund Manual, and they're very specific on how they can dispose those vehicles. So, there again, if we're going to get a replacement vehicle, we now have $123,000 and at $150,000, it comes back to us. So, I'm just letting you know that things that we've done on our part is I'm cutting back the ridership to two days a week, and plus we only have two drivers, so it just kind of keeps us from being burnt out. So, still on the call for volunteers for drivers and for our monies. But, one of the suggestions was Gov. Deals, and some of the things that I found on those vehicles that made them unacceptable were excess miles, mechanical problems, need to repair, non-drivable, sold for parts only, must tow, doesn't run, and they're too small for our needs. So, it's not that I haven't been trying, it's that we have been, and so, just to keep you updated, that we'll still try and still try to impress on the city council that if you can find it in your hearts to find something, then anything is appreciated. Thank you.
John?
Check with Trent Street Veterans Chips. They have a bus that they are trying to sell. That might be a...
I mean, it was about 50, 60,000 miles.
I don't know how much miles it's got on it. I don't know if it got...
Trent Street?
More than that. It's more than that. Is it more than that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's been the problem, excess miles, so...
How many miles is...
We got $123,000 out of it, comes back to us at $150,000.
But, how many miles? What's the mileage you're looking for?
50, 60, because the vehicle will actually be donated to the Veterans Administration, and then they'll pick it up from there, they'll tag it, they'll license it, they'll insure it, and do all the maintenance on it, so it has to be a fairly good repair. And then, that will give us a little bit of a breather room, you know, so we can try to explore other alternatives. I hope everyone voted yes for that amendment for that Veterans Post, the 501(c)(19) organizations can go for fundraisers through the lottery, so I'm hoping everyone voted yes for that.
Thank you for what you do, John.
Still on our delegation. Can I move on to old business? Councilman Holly? Councilman Me?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Best?
Just want to touch base a little bit on what Mr. Sampson had said. I was here listening to what Mr. Young said. What are we planning to do as far as the council, as far as the annexation down there? Are we looking to apply for hardship?
I think that's about the only way that you could do it. I think, the way I understand it, it has to be granted by the county commission. Is that how everybody else understands that?
Well, we, of course, need to prove hardship. Well, first thing we need to do is get the attorney, and then we need, I think, we've got to get an attorney and prove a hardship, but I'm not sure. I don't think we can do that, or exactly what that means.
I got the impression that there was also a possibility that that was tied to zoning situations, walking there was not zoned residential or agricultural, that there was possibility we might be able to go ahead and do that. Haven't talked to anybody about it, but that's something we might look at.
Kevin, are you aware of a new annexation while the TASSER, the legislature, just done the last, this last year?
I have some knowledge of it. I'd have to look into this specific situation. I do know that annexations are allowed if it's upon request of the property owner. Beyond that, there are a few other exceptions, but I would have to explore those a little more.
We can still, but it has to touch, it has to be, it has to touch our, you know, wouldn't go, but to go all the way up. All the way, I guess, would be to prove a hardship, would be to apply for hardship.
Is it on a timeframe?
I don't know.
There was a moratorium for one year through, around through the legislature on that, how that would affect commercial or other properties.
Anything you can find out on that force, Kevin, would be helpful.
There's no address at the next council meeting. I just don't want us to lose that year if it's a year timeframe, as far as picking up the rest of that midtown area.
Yep. On the agenda, just do an update on, on that, so you can help us out. If we're bargaining, you got to hear, Councilman Ayler?
Yeah, I just want to echo pretty much what Councilman Best said and what Jody's concerns are. I definitely believe we need to do more, make concerted effort. Now that we have a city manager in place too, I think that going through that process now, that there is a process different than what there was before, for applying for the hardship, et cetera, will make it more likely to be able to get that done. So, I just wanted to mention that I am definitely in support of moving forward with some annexation effort.
Anything else? Councilman?
Yes.
The only thing I have was the attorney. We need to, at some point, discuss maybe at the workshop this month, how we're going to do this, but we need to get one in place. Department reports, up curly?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things I need to talk to you about. Last time Councilman Ayler asked about our debt service, and I've got a sheet here that tells you what our debt service is this year. Along the side, there's a bar that shows what it will be at the end of this year, 6/30/2015. See, that first row is paid off this year, so, and next year, the second row will be paid off. But, as we end of the year, the city will have outstanding debt, $739,520. And, of course, that doesn't include HUB, which will have outstanding debt of $7,495,000. You look at the bottom bar, you'll see where we're standing at the beginning of this time line, so you can compare the two, where we are now and where we will be at the end of the year. I had something come up that was unusual. The library actually applied for a grant, and I don't know if you want to deal with this tonight, but they had not come before council to get approval for the grant. So, I suggested that I would bring it to you tonight to explain that there are some TDA monies left, that if you approve them getting this grant, the match could come out of the TDA funds that were dedicated to the library, so it wouldn't cost you anything extra out of the general fund. So, if you want to deal with it tonight or next time, it's up to you.
A quick question on that. If we, can we do that without it being a recurring cost next year and the year after, the year after, you know?
It's not a recurring grant. It would not be.
Yeah, but you know, it's something that if you give money, if you increase their budget, then...
Well, we can do it with these TDA monies without, because it's coming on the building grounds.
Okay.
It's not coming out of the line of the, the, the accurate budget.
Y'all want to look at this tonight or put it on next week? Anybody have a preference? Doesn't matter to me. I know some, most of the time, we try to do, if you're going to vote on money, we try to put it on the agenda, so let's just do that.
Okay. That's all I have at present time.
Okay, thank you. Still on the department reports. Drack, any of the chiefs?
I got two things. One, I was going to give you an update on the Gov. Deals auction we had. We made $7,087 from seized drug vehicles that we had through Drug Fund, and we also made $1,814 for the surface cop stuff that we had in for a general fund. We're going to have another Gov. Deals auction here in about another month. Most of that's going to be off city property, some police cars, I think some extra things you guys got down underneath the building, a few other things I think we're going to put on there. So, we have another, that'll be all for general fund, the next auction, so. The other thing is, we had updated our server for our in-car cameras last year. Now we have to update our Phase 1 units in the cars. The company that we have, they're becoming obsolete, the Phase 1s are, and we have to do Phase 3. I've talked to them, they're no longer going to be working on those anymore repairing them, nor are they going to be prepared to provide the card, memory card to go into them. So, what they're going to do is they're going to allow me to be able to trade in my Phase 1s with the new updated grade Phase 3s at half cost with the cost for a new camera. The new cameras usually run you about $5,500. These are running you around $2,400. I have 12 Phase 1 camera units in my patrol cars right now. I'm needing to go ahead and get permission to use money from my Drug Fund to purchase the new cameras and also to trade in the Phase 1s for Phase 3s.
Can we do that on next week?
You can.
You don't, I know there's a timeframe, but it's not...
No, I could do it. I was presenting to the council today. Y'all have some questions?
How much is it per car?
Each car would be $2,415. Like I say, I was going to use my Drug Fund for it.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
That's all I got.
Okay.
That's why all my guy got is, y'all got the printout for our October incident with Ford's. Second thing, I've got, I've got a couple guys coming with me next week going to Pigeon Forge, four air class, and only Ebola, with a concern that's around here in the morning. I'm taking calls about every round of that, about, you know, what are we doing to prepare for it? We're slowly doing it. Actually, Brandon is going to be taking some classes for fire dollars when we kick it out to Anderson County, just going to be coming through Pigeon Forge Fire Department. There's no cost for it. The class will be named from 6 to 10. Like I say, that's a couple of options, and another fire guard is going for taking that. So, you know, if any of them date, it does break loose, at least we're, you know, a little bit ahead of the game and getting prepared for it. Still got some requests for some bell ringers. The date's being moved to December the 1st, where we start ringing the bell at the Harriman City Boot City, so...
Any council outside of there?
I have to get, I look for some emails to come in, a phone call, grab me off the street or something, guys. I'll put a challenge out to our new team manager to see if he can come down and tell us this. We've always, Fire Department's always done it in the past. Councilman Best was chief, and went down and done it, so he's had a taste of the cold weather despite the rest of us, so it's a, it's a really good council. We enjoy doing it so well. Mr. Young, take a challenge out. Thank you.
I'll be there again this year. Is there anything?
I'll answer.
Still on the department reports. Bill, you got anything?
Yes, sir. Just give you some quick updates. Didn't have on the list since you mentioned the Ebola. Some of our employees participated today in a webinar put on by the American Waterworks Association concerning that in regards to our wastewater, and, you know, there's still just a lot of information being gathered about that, and really, at the end of the webinar, I'm not sure we knew a whole lot more than we did going in, except that research is ongoing, but certainly it's concerned on our end as well. Just update you on several projects. The CDVG project we have going on, water service connections, they have completed approximately 200 services. It looks like that we're not going to spend as much money on this out of CDVG funds as we originally filed on the services, so we're going to drop back, and they're going to allow us to also replace two galvanized lines we have in our system that badly need to be replaced, so we're working on that. And, again, it'll all fall in the timeframe that's set out for the CDVG grants. Pump station rehab, it's like every other project gets to the end, it's just like you build a house and get to the finishing work, seems like you can never get it completed. We're right down the end of the final things. Should be wrapped up hopefully by the middle of this month, but it's, it gets a little aggravating at the end when you sit down and quite tile, we'll do things together. The water system state is all installed, everything on that's done. We're actually, we had a demonstration last week in our board meeting for the board, and we're also in the process of setting up a date with them, probably in an afternoon to come to the water plant, perhaps the warehouse, take a look at that. We get that date set, I also like to send that out to the mayor and council and invite y'all to come. I can't tell you already what a tremendous asset this is bringing to our system. And with that work completed, it looks like we still have about a million dollars in the SRS monies that we're going to utilize, again, for a lot of line replacements throughout our system, so getting ready to get that assessment underway anyway. Ruhr Tan Road, they started work on the water sewer and gas. Basically started down on Bumgardner, moving up toward Ruhr Tan. The electric relocation scheduled again around the 1st of December, that won't be nearly the challenge that the other is. We have a little bit of concern because it looks like they're going to start moving dirt in front of the elementary school, and our lines, our existing lines that are in there, which will be relocated up by the roadway, but in the meantime, you know, as they start to fill that, if we have any problems there, it could be a concern to us because, you know, when you start doing the cut and fill and bury those lines under, a lot more dirt than are under now, you know, if we have any problems out there, so try and coordinate all that with Rogers Group. Anyway, I certainly would expect that we'll have something that occurs out there in this construction. It's just the way it's going to go. One other thing, I think I mentioned this to you before, that as our engineers are doing assessment on our gas system, in midtown, we have an area where our crew is going to put in about 1,000 feet of gas line to complete a loop down there. We've had a dead end situation that's caused us some problems in the winter, keeping the gas flow up in the really cold weather, especially with the hospital down there now, because they use such tremendous load in the winter time. That's going to really help us. It'll be a pretty simple installation, you know, it's just a trenching, you know, install deal, so we've got materials ordered, should be getting that done for the real cold weather down. So, that's what I had. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Do you know, do you know about when the Bumgardner bridge will be completed?
No, sir, I don't know any of the deadlines.
Do you have a point of contact on that project, though?
Oh, yeah.
Can you, Kevin, will you get with Bill and get that point of contact at the project manager, and if you don't mind, what we need is a, is a, we really need a weekly or at least a monthly. That project's got about 16 more months to go, but we need at least an update on it. What's going on? Can we get questions?
Well, every Tuesday morning at 10 o'clock at the TDOT office in Harriman, there's a meeting. There's a meeting of all players right now on the, on the utility end, so they met, they met this morning.
Okay.
So, you know, certainly welcome Kevin or anybody to come be, be a part of that, but that's your best, that's your best opportunity to get updates on everything.
Okay, good, thanks. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, speaking of the Fonder Road Project here, that wasn't, I don't think it was on the list that we got from the Department of Protection that they were delaying, or we haven't been put off again.
No, it's funded, it's fully funded. Any, still on department reports?
Mayor?
Carol?
I'd like to ask Mr. Young, if they shut a road down, they know the five street departments. I mean, we're unaware if it even going to be shut down. Then the buses was calling and everything, and I didn't know how long it was going to be shut down.
What road is that?
Bumgardner. That's, you killed the contractor, didn't you?
It's really TDOT's contractors, but I'll, I'll check on it. I mean, we don't have, we don't have control over that, but I'll, I'll check and see, make sure you get notified on it.
Yeah, you and Kevin, I think on...
It's a TDOT, it's a TDOT project, it's not a utility project.
If you're notified, work as you should.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's just been, Kevin, I hope it's live, because we, we'll have somebody to remember. Anything else? Video reports?
I'm back up.
Sorry, what?
I'm back up. I found another.
Oh, yes, department, yes.
I failed to mention last month that our budget was approved by the state comptroller, and after grilling me for about an hour, booty had to FRA one bond made.
That's pretty good. A1. Thank you.
At some point during our work session, probably need to do a couple of things, talk about the booty questions and how they're answered and how would not be answered next year, as well as go over a annual review of our debt service policy, fund balance policy. We normally do that.
Okay. Thank you. Update on Renaissance Festival. Is this possible?
It will be good news, I would assume.
Yes, good news. I'd appreciate it. Yes, good news. 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 We had over 20 crafters, five food vendors, plus like the beer, soda and water were done by the festival, we had cash and credit card sales, we had electricity and water things done. Overall, the feedback was that people appreciated the vision and the scope of the project and that we were on the right path, but just to keep going. So our plans include to continue to smooth out the festival grounds and the parking, to add vendors, participants, road signs, the children's round, turkey legs, fresh fruit, jousting, all those things for the grand opening in May, we're scheduled for the last three weekends in May including Memorial Day and so besides that, I included a recap from the WBIR interview that was done onsite on Sunday and also the county executive Ron Lee came on Saturday and he wrote us a personal letter thanking us, so, and I just put together some pictures from the show, so thanks to everybody for a good show.
It was a good warm-up, wasn't it? Yeah, for everybody.
Right, Lars wanted to put a stake in the sand and boy, it was a heroic effort to do that, but now we kind of know what needs to be improved and what we can do, just keep doing it.
Anybody have anything?
I just want to say it was a great festival, to work with you all has been an absolute pleasure and we're incredibly thankful for what you guys are doing, it's very exciting. I think it's going to grow to be a huge event and whatever we can do to support you, to continue to support what you've done and thanks to Bill Young and HUB for getting the utilities out there, it's something the whole city needs to be behind and we've done a great job so far.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I think they're very proud, I enjoyed my time out there, so.
Anybody else? Yeah, I like the, the city council and the city firemen, the policemen, the street workers, everybody that's, that's what we're supposed to do is have a vision and the city council did and it's kind of hard to envision what was going to happen, but it's a good job and it seems like it was going to be, it's going to be work cited for May, so.
We made sure that it was family friendly, we wanted, you know, and so that way, if you're an older church lady or a young kid or somebody in between, that you can all say, this is my show.
Yeah, real good.
Thanks.
Next item is discussed and possibly approved, taking bids for a lease purchase on a backhoe for the street department, should be included in everybody's packet, copied from the Contractors Machinery Incorporated, this is a state bid, government price, and I'll let Angie or about Carly even one.
I brought this in, what I did, I took, this is not an idea, it's basically a value that was given to us and we compared to our budget, I ran it through amortization schedules and you can see attached to that, different timeframes and the interest rates that they're suggesting, these interest rates very competitive, probably better than we give them back. But I did it for two years, three years and four years, basically the four-year one matches pretty closely to what we had budgeted this year, however, I am suggesting that we postpone this, the reason being that we've spent, just FY today, $289,300 more than we've taken in revenue and we have spent $479,000 on those grants that we have not been reimbursing. It appears that we will be getting 100 and 1,000 back, but that's going to put us still $379,000 out of our pocket for those grants and that hit our fund balance. It does look like this year that TCRS, we're going to have to spend 170,000 more than we had budgeted and that came about because we negotiated with them to keep our rate the same, but after we fast budgeted, the decision was made that we had to move to a 32% rate, that's an extremely high rate and therefore we're likely to have to spend 170,000 more, so I would say you probably should postpone this to March, see where our property tax revenue is like and our sales tax revenue, however, if you want to go ahead and go through with it, we will do so.
With an interest rate like this, is there any reason why we wouldn't go for five or six years?
Well, I'd, for grabs, we all have time, the more interest I'm hiding.
I understand that, but it's just so low.
Yeah, it's a little rate, however, I expect, I expect rates to go up next year, so if you're locked in, you know, that's good.
I'm hoping our property tax revenues will go up with our aggressive approach on the, I mean, I'm hoping that we'll see a big increase on that. Actually, what's on here is to take bids, so is that what, is that what we, is that what this was put on here, do you want to move forward and take bids or are you wanting us to consider that?
I'm not even in favor of taking bids right now, because it won't be good unless we go ahead and do it and I know we need to quit.
Yeah, we put it on the budget, we budgeted this three or four years ago.
Definitely need it, but we've got these other things that came in, hit us financially that I just mentioned, but we really shouldn't have had another debt until March timeframe and we see how much money we've got from property tax and what the sales tax picture looks like. That's just my recommendation, you can go whichever route you'd like.
And right now, we're always lowest on cash flow, right?
November's our lowest cash flow.
Yeah, because we're always spending money and we're not taking any of your property tax.
How much of the 479,000 on its grants are we going to get back, other than 100 in town?
We're only going to get, we're scheduled to get another 100 and 1,000 back, but it's been a long coming, it's been over 30, 30 days or more, but they said they were going to write a check and it hasn't arrived, so that's going to mean that we put 380,000 into these grants and we had expected to only put about 150,000.
So you're saying that's.
That hit our fund balance. Now, the problem is that originally we were told that some engineering costs should be paid, well, they changed their, you know, the plan and told us now those engineering costs cannot be reimbursed now and then later on, we were told that, well, if we do these all in one year, that we will give you a 90% reimbursement, well, that hasn't been followed up and so unless that's followed up on and achieved, we will get no more from the state testing and so we'll have a 380,000 cost for these grants. I think it'd be good if we followed up to see if that agreement was valid and we should get 90% reimbursement.
Yeah, I remember that conversation, one of the, remember this thing went, it started in '07 and by no fault of ours, it was mainly TDOT that things kept getting put off, getting put off, getting put off and things changed and then meanwhile, all our requirement, the grant requirements changed and that's where we got into trouble. Then we thought we might save a little bit when they came back and said if you fast-track everything, you get 10%, an extra 10% back and we just, I think that, I think, I think Bobby had a letter that said that.
So, but all this money.
But somebody's got to follow up with it, you know, I think somebody needs to follow up, let's see, you made that agreement with us, we want 90% back, not 80%.
But this is out for the Wild and Morgan Street, Wild and Morgan?
Yeah, it was a 1.1 or 2 million dollar project.
We've got about a million, 380,000 spent and we only got about 800 and some thousand back, which is very unpredictable and not what we expected at all, so.
Back to the backhoe, like I said, we've budgeted three or four years in a row, we keep delaying it, I went down, looked at the backhoe that the street department's got, it's barely moving now, if it goes down, we're just stuck without a backhoe. They just tell us keep delaying getting our equipment, everything down there is just about, just held on with duct tape. I like this, trying to move forward and get this backhoe.
And do I, I mean, if we, if you might, if there was a motion and we accepted it, if we started the wheels for bids with the holidays and everything, I'm sure it would be the end of December before we got bids back, well, we were at least right around Christmas, I'm sure.
What is it, this interest rate, Tom, is it, he said, is, would that go through just this year or?
Well, this one that was given to us appears to be fairly firm, I mean, look at the rates, they're very good rates and I agree, we need the equipment, but I'm telling you, you have a financial impact here, but you don't know what the outcome will be with state, as well as you don't know what property tax and sales tax would be in the short term and if you add on another debt service payment, then you're kind of going to wind up. I think we should try to buy it this year, but I think we should wait until March to take a look at it, but as I said, if we want to do it, we'll go through with it.
What does that do for you in this climate? What's the backhoe?
When I looked at it, it just tore apart, so I don't.
You seen it when it went down, Mr. Curly says he feels like when we get it one in March, I've got one of the best mechanics, he'd keep it going.
I'm like Wayne, I mean, we've been budgeting this, I've only got a year, a little over a year left, so I want to say it's getting something in place, but we took, if we started it right now, I mean, it would be, it would be mid or late December when the bids closed out and then I'm sure they would be good for 30 days or I don't know, so we're waiting till December or January to start the process, y'all want to try to do that, put it on the second meeting in December, take a bid, the second meeting in December, we'll try to take a look at it and it'll stretch it out till November, I mean, February.
Really, what we've got here is at least purposes, it's a government deal of what it is, really, really don't even have to bid something like that out, because that there is the best you're going to get, I mean, it's your lease from the person.
Price is comparable to what was offered last year.
Yeah, I think we could, we budgeted.
Same.
Totally fine. Okay.
So basically, we just take this and call them up and.
Purchase the right way, I want to, it's a government.
Would we not swerve use drug fund money, wouldn't it?
Could they use the backhoe?
Could we get a trigger, why? Some tactical swatting, it's coming, you have a black and white backhoe, right?
Yeah. Well, I just don't want you to say that, I do tell you something, you know, this financial dilemma may resolve itself in the state at some point, but it's not going to resolve itself to the point where we thought it was and.
And that 32% is going to be, if I think I remember correctly, it's going to be for a long time.
It's advertised over 30 years.
30 years, so.
The only thing that would give us relief from that is legislative action or the value of the investment that Tennessee has in terms of investments in the stocks and bonds they have, the value goes up, our paper will go up.
Economy gets better.
Yeah.
Well, we know a lot tonight whether, what's going to happen with the future, so what do y'all want to do, put this off to December, then you look at it again?
I think.
I mean, if anybody feels otherwise, let's make them up to the knock and move on. Reading of Resolution R1114-01, a resolution about the City of Harriman expressing support of the Rome County Major Thorough Fair Plan, this was, of course, we discussed this for an hour, it was over an hour last week in a workshop, the resolution is in your packet and it's kind of a boilerplate resolution and I know the City of Rockwood, we don't have to read, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Eber, his second, second by Councilman Benson.
Councilman Eber. No, I don't.
Councilman Benson.
No, sir.
Floor's open. It's a very good, it's a very good plan and it's worthy of looking at, I don't know if we can leave a copy up front, Kevin will need a copy, I know, but that's just good information that as far as demographics especially. There's a motion in a second to express our support for the Rome County Major Thorough Fair Plan.
Chris Engle?
Yes.
Mike Bede?
Yes.
Buddy Halli?
Yes.
Ken Me?
Yes.
Ken Ma.
Discuss and possibly approve a contract for professional services with Thompson and Associates?
That's mine.
Okay, Maria?
Late last year, y'all approved us making application to the Tennessee Historical Commission for a grant, $12,000, our match was 8,000, it's a $20,000 grant and we went out for, requested for proposals and we received three, one was cultural resource analysis and their bid was $19,630.29, Thompson and Associates was $18,975 and Benchmark Planning was $20,000. These were brought to the Harriman Historical Zoning Commission on October 14th and they voted to choose Phil Thompson Associates as our consultant to do our, to revise our design guidelines for downtown historical buildings and for the residential historical design guidelines, as well as do some renderings for the urban renewal and redevelopment area of the gods.
The purpose of discussion is a motion to approve, motion by Councilman Eber is a second, second by Councilman Martin, Councilman Eber, Councilman Martin, floor's open for questions.
So this is actually go ahead and choose them and then start working with our people and that's for, they'll be designing, showing facade designs and?
Yeah, they'll do the design guidelines, new design guidelines for downtown and for the residential district and then they'll do the renderings for downtown only for the facades on the historical buildings, that's the scope of the.
So downtown historical buildings don't?
Yeah, well, they're leaving HUB out and the Temperance Building is already covered by Sparkman and Associates and so it'll, and the Princess Theater's already been done, so it's going to pick up, you know, what's, it's not going to do everything because there's no need to do.
What other historical do we have?
Well, there's other buildings, the ones across the street from the Princess, the Miller Brewer Building's over here, the ones across the street are really kind of nondescript. They also do infill designs for like areas where you have demolition, what you might want to put back and so we'll have several public meetings and if people want to come, it'll be open to the public, the Historical Zoning Commission will review the drafts and the drawings and be able to comment and the public will be invited, the Horse Talk Heights Association, the Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Advisory Committee, the IDB, so everybody will have input into.
So this is, how does it, I guess it would, because then if they're in some part of the.
The urban renewal revitalization, how will this intertwine with the urban renewal revitalization?
This will give, if we have developers that want to come downtown and buy the buildings, it'll give them a guideline for what to shoot for as far as an exterior renovation on the facade, to keep it in period, you know, and the guidelines would back that up.
That what, all those, we walk those developers through the building, I think this is probably what they were asking for, if we have.
Yeah, and what we have right now is very old, 20, over 20 years old and Phil Thompson does really good work, it'll be, it'll help, it will help us market that area better.
Would this provide a form of design guidelines that Council could prove and put in here?
Well, the council doesn't need to approve the design guidelines, the Historical Zoning Commission would approve them, but of course, you know, you all would have the opportunity to review them and.
I just think if you want to make an official, finding an ordinance for the council.
That's, they're not required to be adopted by ordinance, it's according to the state, they're only required to be adopted by the Historical Zoning Commission.
Can you enforce them?
Can we enforce them?
Yeah. My concern was enforcement, because you throw all these things out there and nobody can enforce them.
Well, we have them now, they're just obsolete and need to be updated.
Is this money coming out of budget or is this all you?
It was already approved at the end of last calendar year.
Spend the money?
To spend the money.
So that's all you got?
I don't recall a specific one, if we would budget.
Prior to making application.